Coffee shops and so on, and so we're hoping that in that way we'll be able to bring people from downtown to the festival and vice versa. And that's just one example there. We're also looking to increase our downtown banners and decorations. We're working on some of those already in coordination with our garden day in the park. One of our other issues there for the downtown event advertising, as you know, tourism is looking at getting hit with a budget cut and will not be issuing grants for this coming year, and it's possible that that program will be done away with entirely. So, we would actually need to be able to assume some of that responsibility ourselves, which in some ways would be preferable to be self-sufficient, but it is an added concern as we move forward for fiscal year 2014. Our operating expenses are roughly the same with the exception of the addition of the cellphone. And if you flip over to the back, we have actually requested a little additional money for the office equipment and furniture as well as some professional development funds. Part of that will be because I've been invited to apply for leadership Scott County. We don't currently have an item in our budget to account for that, but I'd really like to go. And office equipment and furniture, I currently have no file cabinets, and as an ex-military man, that makes me cry a little every time I walk into my office because it detracts from my ability to organize things to the preferable level for me as far as basic administrative proficiency. Are there any other questions about the budget? Anything that you saw that I hadn't quite covered or...
Put it in your hands, Mr. Science Director.
Okay. I did include a legend on there, so you can see the items that are new. And probably the most important thing about this is that whenever we see a reduction of anticipated funding, whether that's, you know, fewer members than expected, or a necessary reduction in funding at the municipal or county level, we've dropped our operating expenses pretty much as far as they can go. I'm paid less than my predecessor. I receive no benefits. And, you know, we're trying to be as lean as possible, which unfortunately means when we don't receive as much money as we're hoping for, it all comes out of our heart and soul, which is promoting our downtown, creating events for our downtown, and working as hard as we can to preserve our downtown and promote it.
And you mentioned that tourism is looking at a significant budget reduction. Can you elaborate on that?
I'm not sure if that's gone through yet. There's... Okay. I don't actually have the details on that offhand. I know that Lori had discussed that with me, that they were looking at a... That was the reduction coming from the governor, correct?
Yes.
And they paid their building off, so the combination of those two factors, I'm sure, although a reduction in funding at the state level would obviously be significant. Again, I don't personally have the details on that, but I was informed that they were getting hit from the State House and that that was going to impact their ability to operate over the next year, which, given our close working relationship with them, will impact our ability to operate as well.
Can I ask you a quick question? David, you've been here now how many months?
Since August 16th.
August, okay. Have you heard me mention the bridge on 460, the railroad bridge? Have I mentioned that to you?
Yes.
I have? I thought I was giving it a break.
No, we're including that as part of our upcoming design audit. I've actually seen concept art in my office-
I was gonna say-
-for ways to, you know, at least put lipstick on the pig.
Well, Jeff Singer... I'm glad to hear you say that. Jeff Singer did some, I think, some renderings for us at one time, and I know there's obviously four different corners to it, and one of the corners did get landscaped, and it probably needs a little bit of attention, a little lipstick and rouge, I guess you might say. But the other three corners could certainly use it. And, you know, I know that obviously can't come out of your budget per se, but I'm sure the mayor's working on his budget, and, you know, maybe there's-
We'd be happy to assist with that.
Is the bridge in the Main Street district, though?
It's not strictly speaking in our program area, but we are actually looking to revise that. We're not based solely on the historic district, which is probably what you're thinking of offhand. Our program area is different for that type of big map from planning and zoning that shows the difference between those two. But that's also something, and a part of this design audit will be factoring into our future decision to revise our program area, and by that I mean expand it so that we can be more inclusive of downtown. There's certainly enough, I've done some preliminary research based on the old fire insurance maps, because it'll actually show the construction dates of the buildings, to justify us expanding quite a bit, really.
So, you have two different... You have a downtown area and then you have a service area?
A program area, yes.
A program area, okay.
There's the historic district proper, and then the Main Street program area. The Main Street program area is larger, and we're looking to expand that as well to provide more services to other businesses. You know, we've seen some new businesses come in, you know, North and South Broadway, that we don't currently include in our program area, and we would like to.
How big is your program area? What are the boundaries?
That's an actually very good question, because it's extremely irregular.
It is, and from sitting on the board, it's not nearly as broad as you anticipate. That's what I remember from that. It shoots up Broadway, I think, right before Washington Street, maybe, and then 460, I want to say almost at the Shell Station. I think it stops before it goes around the corner there.
But it zigzags in between, too, so... And there'd certainly be justification for stretching it further out, at least to Highland, which it doesn't currently, which might seem slightly absurd to some folks, but apparently our program area hasn't been significantly reviewed since 2005. That was one of the first things that I saw, and I plan for us to review it on a far more frequent basis, in part because, basically, buildings just keep getting older. And especially once you get past that 50-year point, suddenly you have buildings that are eligible for the National Register or eligible for inclusion in the historic district if they were to revise it, which they probably won't. But, you know, that's the significant distance of time, really, before you can apply for something, and after that, they can base it on architectural elements, or who the architect was, the significance of the building itself. There are always exceptions.
Well, whether it was in your purview or not, I wanted to mention it to you. I mean, you know, maybe it's something you can kind of help promote. You know, to me, I see that as the gateway into Georgetown, really. I mean, more people enter Georgetown from 460 probably than any other of the main arteries coming into town. And I just, you know, I think it would be nice to fix that area up and clean it up. And, you know, somebody mentioned the possibility of going to having a contest, letting some of the landscapers or whomever want to take a corner and, you know, allocate some of their materials towards fixing up that section and then putting their signage in there, and, you know, kind of a win-win, hopefully, but anyway, I just want to-
I was at the last Tourism Commission meeting, and part of their upcoming work plan, they were looking at the fact that we're really, really pretty once you get here, but sometimes the road in doesn't quite match-
Right.
...once you get to our heart.
Right.
So...
And really, the bridge coming over Elkhorn as well, you know, it's a little bit rough on the edges, too.
So, that's part of what we'll be looking for our design audit, and I'm sure Tourism Commission will be looking at it.
And then when you get up by the interstate, you know, coming on and off the interstate. I've mentioned that before as well. I'll let that go.
I doubt that we'll expand our program area quite all the way to the exits, but-
You're all the way to the rest area where you got your TV.
And we are very grateful to the Tourism Commission for allowing us to place that out there. That was a great partnership activity on our part with them. So, they were very enthusiastic in their support and with helping us to find a space out there to promote the downtown. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, David.
Thank you. I'd also encourage the council members, if you have the opportunity or the impetus to meet with me one-on-one at any other time, in case there were some concerns you didn't necessarily want to bring up in council session for whatever reason, my door is always open, and I'd be more than happy to discuss it with you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is ordinance establishing the duties of the City Clerk Treasurer, and this is sponsored by Ms. Tackett. Go ahead. First reading.
An ordinance establishing the duties of City Clerk Treasurer, sponsor Councilmember Connie Tackett. Whereas KRS 83A 085 subsection 3 subsection E allows the city to establish additional duties of the City Clerk beyond those duties already established in statute, whereas the City of Georgetown desires to set forth those duties of the City Clerk Treasurer, now therefore being ordained by the City of Georgetown. Section 1. Code of Ordinance's Article 3, Division 4, Section 2-78 titled Duties is hereby amended as follows. In addition to the duties required by KRS 83A .085 and such other duties as assigned by statute and ordinance, the Clerk Treasurer shall perform the following duties. A: Attend each council meeting, regular and special. B: Record council proceedings in key minutes. C: Publish all legal advertisements, budget summaries, or text in all ordinances adopted by council. D: Collect city ad valorem taxes, including delinquent taxes. E: Process and print yearly ad valorem taxes statements. F: Make deposits and distribute receipts when required. G: Perform the duties of the alcohol beverage control administrator, including but not limited to collecting regulatory and license fees. B: Issuing local alcohol beverage licenses. C: Enforcing violations of state and local ABC laws. H: Act as custodian of records, receiving, processing, and responding to all open records requests. I: Collect city insurance premium tax, including delinquent taxes. J: Collect garbage utility and railroad franchise fees. K: Collect code enforcement fines. L: Report sales and use tax to the Commonwealth of Kentucky. M: Coordinate advertisements and bid openings for all competitive procurements. N: Administer the annual surplus property sale and other surplus sales as necessary. O: License off-leash vehicles. P: Issue parking permits for permitted streets, Dudley and Clayton. Q: Issue golf cart permits. R: Coordinate special events assisting citizens in obtaining city permissions for 5Ks, parades, etc. S: Service secretary for the Board of Ethics. T: Coordinate bi-monthly meetings with all city directors for council meeting preparation. U: Prepare the agenda for council meetings. V: Ensure open meetings law compliance for council and committee meetings. W: Prepare an annual budget for the City Clerk's office. X: Administer financial interest disclosure requirements for all city directors, board members, elected officers, and candidates for elected offices. V: Provide information to the public and personnel by phone. Z: Greet visitors and perform other office duties when necessary. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication, publicly introduced and read for the first time March 24, 2014.
Any comments?
I have a question. Why is the City Clerk on here? Why did you take the preparing the agenda for the council out of your office and move that to the City Clerk's office? And coordinate the monthly meeting with the city directors for the council meeting? Why did you do that?
Let's go back to each one of them. You gave me about four or five of them, didn't you?
No, actually, okay. Here, it is T and U on the list.
T: Coordinate bi-monthly meetings with all city directors for council meeting preparation. We do that on Mondays prior to the meeting so that all directors can have input on what they would like to see on the agenda.
Why did you... Well, and it goes along with the next one, preparing the agenda. Why did you take that out of your office and put that into the Clerk's office?
I saw there was no problem doing that. I felt that my assistant has plenty enough to do in coordinating that office during the day, and Tracy volunteered to do that.
One question, or two questions. First question is this, shouldn't there be something in here about allowing the Clerk Treasurer as an elected officer to designate somebody in her office to perform these duties as well? Because, for example, attend each council meeting, regular and special, that's gonna be a major imposition. I know Lori-
Good point. Good point.
And the other question I have is on the position description that was put in here. Obviously, we're not voting on the position description. That's not part of the ordinance. I mean, this right here.
No, this is separate.
Yeah. Do we have a... And Ms. Noack brought it up, but I actually had the same thought over the weekend. Do we have a position descriptions on mayor and council as well?
We do not. We just use KRS 83A 130. That outlines the duties of the council and the mayor.
So, did we just develop this position description for what-
When we were thinking about making the position appointed, when we were going through that whole conversation, the job description was developed for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, this is changed a little bit from the last one. That was last week, I guess it was last week. This one's changed a little bit from that at the top, because one of the things that struck out to me was that it answers to the position answer to the mayor, and it doesn't with its elected. So, why do we even have this?
It was only there because of the conversation about making the position appointed. When the position did not become appointed, we no longer need that job description. It's just some reference material for you.
That's why I don't understand why the last two meetings that it was added to our packet for-
Just so you would have information on what the City Clerk is doing in the office. And that's why, since the position is not going to be appointed, and we are signing extra duties via an ordinance, it's now drawn out in the letter points in the outline format so that it's easier to read and in an ordinance format.
And the job description was requested by Ms. Tackett also. Any other comments? First reading. Okay, first reading of an ordinance annexing property at Eder Lane by consent annexation sponsored by Mr. McEwen.
An ordinance annexing into the City of Georgetown attractive land containing 2.09 acres located at 183 and 1/2 Eder Lane in Scott County, Kentucky. Whereas the City of Georgetown and the County of Scott are joint property owners of a record of attractive land to be annexed, have given prior written consent to the annexation of the property. Whereas the property is contiguous to the existing city limits of the City of Georgetown as urban in character and suitable for development for urban purposes without unreasonable delay, now therefore being ordained by the City of Georgetown. Section 1. Pursuant to KRS 81A .412, the Georgetown City Council hereby annexes the following unincorporated area, Scott County, into the city limits of Georgetown. Being all of that tract or lot described as Jackie Wise, DB 92, page 215, existing lot 141, plat at DB 73, page 155, 2.090 acres zone A1, as shown on the plat of survey, Wise Property Eder Lane. Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, prepared by Thirbred Engineering Incorporated, dated June 12, 2012, of record in plat cabinet 10, slide 362. Scott County Clerk's Office, formerly described as being of all of lot number 141 as shown on map or plat of graves subdivision as recorded in deed book 73 at page 155 in the office of the Scott County Clerk. Being the same property conveyed to the City of Georgetown and County of Scott by deed from Maria E. Chavez and Ricardo Chavez, recorded in deed book 356, page 489, Scott County Clerk's Office. Section 2. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law, publicly introduced and read for the first time March 24, 2014.
Any discussion on this at this time?
Did we advertise and do everything that we needed to do?
I'm not required to do that on a consent annexation.
We've been working in conjunction with the county. They're on board with it.
Did we get a plat of this last time, or have we seen a plat of this?
I can't remember if I sent you all a plat, but I'd be glad to send you one.
It might be good to see.
Yeah, yeah. Glad to send you a plat.
I do have one other request. Marvin and I, Eder Lane, I guess a portion of that road is in pretty bad shape. And I thought it got paved last year, but I guess it didn't.
That's on our list.
Okay, good. Good. We heard about it.
I've heard about it, too.
Good.
I can go. I'll just say, I've been and looked at the property myself, once it became city-county property. Since we... Our offices, our county, city and county agencies worked. You can go look at the new fence at the front of the property as well as whatever map you provided.
Okay. First ordinance, first reading of an ordinance annexing property at Paints Depot in McCollin Circle by consent annexation, and this is sponsored by Ms. Tackett.
An ordinance annexing into the City of Georgetown attractive land containing 17.18 acres located at the northwestern intersection of Paints Depot Road and US 460, McCollin Circle. An attractive land containing 91.64 acres located at the southwestern intersection of Paints Depot Road and US 460, McCollin Circle. 1367 Paints Depot Road in Scott County, Kentucky. Sponsor, Councilmember Connie Tackett. Whereas Gaines Interest Limited and Catherine S. Snow, property owners of record of the two tracts of land to be annexed, have given prior written consent to the annexation of the properties, and whereas the two tracts of land are located across McCollin Circle from each other, and whereas the property is contiguous to the existing city limits of the City of Georgetown and is urban in character and suitable for development for urban purposes without unreasonable delay, now therefore being ordained by the City of Georgetown. Section 1. Pursuant to KRS 81A 412, the Georgetown City Council hereby annexes the following unincorporated area of Scott County into the city limits of the City of Georgetown. Parcel 1. Attractive land containing 17.1 acres located at the northwestern intersection of Paints Depot Road and US 460, as more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, and incorporated by reference herein. Being a portion of the property conveyed to Gaines Interest Limited by deed dated December 15, 1998, recorded in deed book 237, page 511, the office of the Scott County Clerk. Attractive land containing 91.64 acres located at the southwestern intersection of Paints Depot Road and US 460, with an address of 1367 Paints Depot Road, as more particularly described in Exhibit B attached here, too, and incorporated by reference herein. Being a portion of the property conveyed to Gaines Interest Limited by deed dated September 5, 2011, recorded in deed book 260, page 34, by deed dated December 15, 1998, recorded in deed book 237, page 511, by deed dated January 23, 1959, recorded in deed book 87, page 40, all in the offices of the Scott County Clerk. Section 2. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law, publicly introduced and read for the first time March 24, 2014.
Having your packets and application for registration. You also have an analysis done by the planning commission, I'm sorry, by planning and zoning staff. And you also have Mr. Dick Murphy here, who represents the applicants. If you all have any questions, he's available to answer.
I do have one, I guess, that was... I may not be reading this right, but on the staff report, under the site statistics, it says the acreage is listed as 10882. Yet, the very next two paragraphs describe one being 17.18 acres, and then the second parcel being 174 acres. Can you... I would just, and this has nothing to do with them, but when we have something like this come in front of us, I think it would be appropriate for us to have a representative from planning and zoning here, especially since we have a staff report. Because there's a lot of questions and insight that I would like to have from P&amp;Z that we won't have tonight, just for future reference.
Yeah, we can get Mrs. Only the first reading. We can get her back here for the second reading.
Not to throw anybody under the bus, I just kind of thought they would be here.
Yeah. I would assume that they would have been.
I'm Dick Murphy. I'm representing the family. Susan Gaines Jackson is with me today. She's one of the five or six cousins that own this property. I'm representing the cousins. I did talk to Mr. Joe Kane, and this afternoon, he said he had to go to a school board meeting tonight and couldn't be here. It was for another purpose. But the difference in the acreage is that in addition to the 17.18 and the 91.64, there's 82.4 acres, which is going to be in green belt. And that, I've had a number of meetings with the planning and zoning staff, that area, that 82.4 acres is not supposed to be annexed because it's going to stay green belt in its natural area, but it is part of the overall farm acreage. We're allowed to use it as trails and sort of passive open space in part of this, but the area to be annexed is the 17.18 and the 91.64. The greenbelt area, we're... I just, we talked it over and decided that should not be annexed.
What is the... I've read the report, but can you tell me, just in your own words, what's the plan for this development? Currently, it's A1, obviously. I mean, the plan for this land, currently it's A1. What's the particular zoning you're going for, the density thereof?
We'll be asking for a mixture of community commercial and residential zones on this. Also, we've discussed this with the planning staff as well. We don't have the exact breakdown at this point. They said it'd be appropriate to come through and annex this first and then come in for a zoning. What we're doing is, the family wants to master plan this property. As I said, there's five or six cousins involved, and at this point, they're in agreement and feel like it's good to have one plan for the entire property rather than piecemeal. As you know, when there's cousins and when it devolves further down the family tree, sometimes there's conflict. There's no conflict in the family at this time, though, but we're trying to get to the situation where we can master plan this. Instead of having a situation a couple of years from now where there may be one person who says, "I want my 20 acres, and I want to do something, and I have my own plan for it," it may or may not coordinate with the other land. So, we're trying to do this now, get ahead of the curve, and get it annexed, and come to the planning commission with a rezoning plan and development plan, so we can have one integrated plan rather than piecemeal. But right now, the plan is to ask for some community commercial on it, and the balance will be residential zones on the property.
I think this has been, this is the first kind of big piece of land outside of a couple acres here and there that would be done for family members, I mean, not for personal family, but for, you know, split, to help just people just right outside the city limits get either get on shore or be able to split up a piece of property among their children or whatever. This is probably the first time in probably six or seven years we've had this chunk of property to be annexed. And I remember when we've talked about it in the past, at least I personally, and then a few others on council, I don't know if they're still on council, have thought that probably the appropriate process from now on is for planning and zoning to have a particular zoning that they would zone this property if it was annexed before we make the decision to annex. Because one of our problems, especially in the city, and we're kind of a payroll-based city, not a property-tax-based city, is this residential development ends up having a net cost in the long run to city services that isn't necessarily recouped. You know, we've got a pretty good amount of platted property out there that hasn't been built on. We got a lot of other property that hasn't been platted but can still potentially be built on, have a lot of infill in the city. And it would make a big difference to me to know how much of this is going to be residential and the density thereof before I could vote to annex it. And I'd have to have a definite idea of what the zoning's going to be, how much of the zoning here, and how much of the zoning there, what the definite plan is going to be before I could annex it, because ultimately residential growth at this point is a net cost to the city, and we're running up against some pretty tight budgetary times coming up with a Toyota that's in a white.
I understand that, and that's why we're proposing inclusion of commercial property in here. When we first started the process, we've been working on this for a year or so. I met with Mr. Smith in the planning and zoning office and asked him exactly that question. Should we submit an entire plan to the planning commission first, or should we come through with an annexation first? He recommended we come through with the annexation first, partially so that we can plan. We know that this is a family. This is not a big corporation coming in and doing this, limited means that we can know that we have the green light to go ahead with this and take this step by step, go to the planning and zoning commission after we have it annexed. We have ideas in mind. I think if you annex this, you're not going to be seeing earth moving out on this property immediately. It's going to allow us to do the master plan and come up with the way we think it'd be the best way to present this to planning and zoning commission, and ultimately to you for the division of commercial versus residential on this. Another reason we're doing this, we have had an inquiry, we had an office user last year who wanted to come in and build an office building for lease to state government, and we sat down with him. It got very serious between the realtors about coming up with the contract, and then when the discussion was about, okay, we have to next- the contract and then when the discussion was about, okay, we have to annex this, we have to rezone it, the potential buyer said, "Sorry, that's just going to take too long, I'm going to have to move on someplace else." And it was fairly good professional positions that would be available here. We want to, we want to get the process initiated so the next time somebody comes down the road to us, we can say to them, "Yes, we're, we're annexed, we're zoned, we have space for you, obviously you'll have to, you the buyer will have to do some infrastructure and construction work, but we, we're ahead of the curve and we don't get met with that reaction that, sorry, I don't have time to, to deal with this." I can assure you, I think in the staff report, it recommended possibly commercial for the northwestern quadrant of this, we also have plans to have some commercial on the southwest which would be up toward the intersection with residential behind, sort of buffering, you'd have commercial at the intersection, then residential, then the green belt on there, is how we envision this.
Do you have any definite beyond, I mean, just that, about the office, the office building, at least to say government, has there been any, I mean, contact made with commercial interests as far as potential to develop this property? I mean, is there any real kind of business expectation at this point that we could be seeing?
We have had contacts, at this point, we haven't wanted to lead them down the road because, because it does take a while. We have had interest expressed on it, I guess it'd be the best way to say it.
Oh, I'll echo what Mark is saying, it, the, and I'm not sure, I guess once the property would be annexed, the zone change would then be out of our hands, am I correct on that?
Yes.
That would be up to Planning and Zoning. You know, we-
Comes back here though for final approval.
But they're subject to, it's kind of like, you know, subject to certain rules, we can't, you know, come up with a-
You all have ultimate authority over all zoning on the property.
But I mean, according to certain rules and dictates, I mean, we can't just-
Is it in the comprehensive plan for multi-use?
Residential.
Comprehensive plan shows residential.
So then there would be justification.
The, the staff report clearly states that it would require the need for expanded police fire protection and schools. And I contacted the school board today and the elementary school that, that this section would obviously feed into would be Western Elementary. Western is already right at a hundred students over capacity. You know, if you look at the number of dwellings, you're looking at two hundred and thirty-four dwellings in this development. Another couple of things that, that pop out to kind of go back to what Mark said, he was talking about vacant plats and preliminary approved plats, in the city of Georgetown, we have forty-three hundred and ten total residential either already platted or approved platted. Current rate of construction, that's about twelve years worth of residential construction right now. To go on in the staff report, it states that the traffic counts on Payne's Depot and McClellan are well below the capacity. That concerns me because that intersection is bad and I think the chief would probably, probably echo that. I, I'm concerned with, with, with annexation period at this point, I think our school systems, or I think our school system really should kind of have a seat at the table when we do this because this impacts them severely. You know, I, this, I guess, and I'm kind of throwing it out there for the other council members, I, this concerns me not, not having a, a master plan before we annex and the impact this is going to have on our city services, our school system, that's a significant concern to me.
Now, to be clear and lawyers, please correct me when I say this, if we annex this and then we turn it over back and we say, "Okay, we'll wait for Planning and Zoning to come up with a zoning designation" and then it's brought to us for the final decision, but there are certain criteria that we have to use in making that decision regarding zoning designation, we have, if it's in the comprehensive plan, in other words, that this is the way that we envision it to be, short of making a material finding that there's some change that hasn't been contemplated by the comprehensive plan, we'll have to go with that zoning. Whereas with annexation, voting it up or down, it's subject to whatever criteria that we deem worthy, I mean, we can make the vote based on, well, based on, you know, our needs as far as being able to extend city services, based upon the school board's needs as far as avoiding overcrowding, those things. So if you really want to close the barn door on this, now's the time at the annexation stage to turn it down.
The standard is, I believe, best interest of the cities.
Best interest of the city, yeah, which is a pretty vague standard. And if this is the time you want to turn it down, this would be the time to turn it down. If this is the time you really want to modify it based upon, listen, we can't afford any more residential development at this point based upon our, you know, tax, tax revenue structure, this is the time to do it. Don't annex it and then turn around and expect, expect to be able to do it at the Planning and Zoning stage.
Andrew, can I ask you a question that relates to that?
Sure.
Mr. Murphy said that the, the property was in the comprehensive plan as residential and only as residential. Would that not be, since it, it wouldn't comply, since they're wanting to do a mixed use, that would give you the justification at the zoning request meeting to deny it? Would deny it?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a best expert on planning and zoning issues, but I couldn't really answer that without researching it. I suspect you're, you're correct that if there is some difference in what they're asking for and what the comprehensive plan calls for exactly, that we would have some wiggle room.
Yeah.
But I don't know if the wiggle room would extend beyond insisting that it be what the comprehensive plan requires.
We don't deviate from the comprehensive plan very often, I mean, it's got to be pretty well documented and justified and it's usually a pretty challenging task. The, I guess, well, the other thing I guess I wanted to mention, it has been a while since we've done an annexation like this, a long time. And to me, it's a positive thing, it, it sends a message that, that things are improving in this community. And the reality is, Mark, I know that there was a study that was once done that said something about the, you know, the, all the residential growth doesn't pay for itself. Well, that, that's, that's a bit misleading because what Georgetown's gone through and what you have to go through, if you're going to grow like we have, is you have the industrial growth, which was Toyota, that was the industrial growth that hit Georgetown, which was, which was wonderful. And then immediately following something like that where you have seven to eight thousand employees, you're going to have residential growth, that's just the natural order. And then thirdly, to follow the residential growth, you're going to have the commercial growth, okay? It's, it, it happens in, in phases. So without the residential growth, you wouldn't have the commercial and the commercial is, is one of the, the main areas in which we do generate revenue. So you have to have the residential, if we cut off all the residential, we wouldn't have-
I mean, we're not talking about cutting off the residential, we have twelve hundred lots platted in the city that are not built on, three times that number that have not been platted but have been approved, could be platted and then built on. So you're looking at, what, six thousand, five or six thousand lots in the city limits? That's a lot of inventory.
Well, they may have been platted, but I don't, I don't think they're ready for construction.
Well, why are we not-
Well, how do, how do we tell somebody that's got a farm that's in the comprehensive plan that-
You really want to preach to that choir, seriously? I mean, you know, we're-
Well, that's why we have a comprehensive plan, is it not why we have a comprehensive plan?
David, the decision to annex is in the city's best interest, we make the decision, yes or no? It's a pretty vague line, we do it in the, we do it vis-à-vis what the city budget, how we can extend city services, how can we extend county services and how it affects the school system. And if we're going to, and if we're going to make those decisions, this is the point at time to make them.
Well, and I, and I think the way, the way you communicate that to someone is by saying, "Listen, we're not prepared for the growth at this point, we're not prepared from a, from a, from a service perspective with our police department, our fire department, our EMS department." You know, I'm, I'm not anti-growth, but I think that we have to be prepared, the school system, obviously, I mean, we, look what a position they're in right now. You know, we're, we're over, overpopulated at almost all but maybe two schools in the entire county. So I think that we've got to protect the city of Georgetown, the services that we provide, because every time we do something like that, we stress those services.
Well, here's what I, I do know, is that over the past several years, we've had very little growth from a residential perspective and, and economically, this, this community's gone through a very challenging time. Everybody was looking for some growth and it's, it's starting to come around a little bit now. And, and, and building homes obviously creates a lot of jobs in this community, there are a lot of people connected and tied into that, probably most of us that are sitting up here in some form or fashion are. And, you know, this, this property's in the comprehensive plan, I mean, they've, they've obviously got every right to come before us. And I, you know, you talk about the intersection, it's on the bypass, it's, it's at Della Point. I mean, how could it, not Della Point, it's at Payne's Depot. I mean, how could it, how could it have any more infrastructure in terms of road improvements than that?
I'm talking about service infrastructure. We know there are roads out there, but go, going back to your point about the residential construction, we're on pace to do three hundred and fifty houses a year.
Right.
We have forty-three hundred and ten lots right now.
Well, I think I read in there that there was, what, a three to four year supply, and I guess I have to go through it again, but I know I read that.
Of the platted.
Of the platted, right.
Right.
That's, that's not counting the preliminary approved, those could be platted in the amount of months.
Okay, well, the other thing I'll share with you is that if you want them to bring in a plan, and I think that's what I was hearing, a plan showing that this area would be residential and this area would be commercial and, you know, have all the, you know, have essentially a preliminary development plan, I mean, we're not talking about a few thousand dollars, we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars for something like that, that's a huge expense when you're really not sure what your, what your project's going to look like. And the Adams Farm, if you recall, the Adams property, when we annexed that, is a great example of that, the Adams came to us, they were going to occupy the home on the back of the property, it's the John Secura property now, and it was all going to be residential. And then, uh-
If I remember correctly, when they, when they annexed it, and I wasn't on council at the time, but I was at the meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the couple came before council, wanted to be annexed into the city, correct me?
That's correct.
And I think they wanted to be on city sewer or some sort of advantage, they were going to fix up the house.
Right.
And then one of the couple passed away.
Sorry, missed traps.
So at the time that you voted, and I remember talking to Tim Jenkins about it after the meeting, the time that you all voted to annex that, you contemplated it staying a farm and staying at A1, after you annexed it, you had no control outside of the comprehensive plan of what it was going to be.
That's what the comprehensive plan's for though.
But you gave that up be after you'd be annexed, I mean, as far as the impact to city services, to the schools, to the whatnot.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm saying is if we had required them to do what you're asking to be done now, they would have spent a significant amount of money on a plan that is not really taking place right now. Now, a plan is going to include some commercial, some residential and some multifamily. When, when somebody wants to come in and, not, not every time, but oftentimes when somebody wants to come in and obtain an annexation, they're not a hundred percent sure, especially with a big piece of property like this, exactly where the commercial part's going to be, where the residential part, the multifamily, and that's extremely expensive to do. And maybe Mr. Murphy can address that, I mean, it's, it's his client, I'm just speaking from experience.
Just one more point on the Adams property. Like I said, council seemed at that night to contemplate it staying agricultural, so the Adamses certainly wouldn't have come up with a plan for development at that point. If you demure and say, "Listen, we can't annex without, without a plan, a development plan," I don't think it's outside the realm of possibility that A1 property, a farm, stay outside the city limits. I mean, I think all we're asking is a definite plan to figure out what this property is going to look like, if it's going to come into our city.
Well-
And if, based upon that design, what that property's going to look like.
Yeah.
If we can reasonably support it with city services and whether the school board can support it.
I hear what you're saying and, and you know what, in, in theory, that, that does make some sense, in reality, it may not work for everybody.
Well, there's no, I know this a hundred percent, we've got a lot of land right next to the city limits, there is no inalienable right to be annexed to the city, traded in the store.
You've proven that, Mark, you have, and there's these properties for the hospital that you chose not to annex.
Is there anything you need, Andrew, to look into?
Well, I, I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Murphy that question, I mean-
Go ahead.
Putting together a preliminary development plan, is that anything that you all are working on or that even you have available or are you planned on doing?
Well, we planned on doing it to submit it to the planning commission, so I've heard some discussion that you all want the plan before you consider the annexation and I want you all to know that that is exactly the question I asked when I went to the Division of Planning a year ago and said, "How should I proceed?" I was, we're, we're willing to do it either way, we're willing to bring the plan, go to the Planning Commission first and then bring it to you, or come to you first for the annexation and then go back to the Planning Commission on that. I was advised to come to you first for the annexation and obviously that didn't commit you all to do it, we're certainly willing to do it either way because I asked that question a year ago. And that, we wanted to take it step by step, we wanted to make it most as economical to the property owner as we could, which is why we went ahead with what we were advised to do, to bring it to you first. I can tell you that the reason we're here primarily is for the commercial portions of this property. We do expect there to be residential on this, we do expect that to take longer to develop than the commercial would. We talked about the cost of city services when we met with the planning staff, they mentioned the commercial issue and did look at the comp plan and found language in the comp plan that would support commercial use near intersections.
Right.
That's in the comprehensive plan, it's not shown on the map, but it states that you can have commercial serve the area even where there's residential shown in the colors on the map. So we told them upfront, we were probably going to be asking for commercial on the northwestern quadrant and a portion of commercial on the southwestern quadrant. We will do procedure-wise what you feel we should do procedure-wise. If you feel we should table this and bring it to the Planning Commission and propose a zone change and then come back to you with that, we were happy to do that. I want you all to know, we, we were sincere in what we were doing, we're doing what we advised, we've talked, talked to the planning staff on this, but we're willing to do whichever way you all want to. Well, I'm confident, some of you all know me, I, I do land use work, I've been doing it for longer than I'll want to admit here in central Kentucky. I know there's, there's land use, there's fiscal implications with what we do. I've found, I've worked on one in Lexington, Townley Center, off of Leestown Road at Leestown and New Circle Road Townley Center, which is a mixed use, has single-family detached, has townhouses, it has apartments, it has professional offices, it has a commercial center on it, it works very well, revenue generated that development supports itself. Got the Mayor's Award in Lexington for the best new development because it's mixed use. We're planning on mixed use here, something like that, which will support itself, so when you are looking at your revenue schedules, you're not going to have to say, "Oh, we're spending all this money to serve that residential area." No, we want it to be supporting itself, so you're getting the tax revenues in from those mixed uses and it's better, you know, it's better for us because what we found out in Townley is that it's real attractive for people to want to be able to walk to a restaurant from their house and have the possibility of maybe walking to work. Out there we have it, you can drop off your car and walk back to your house while your car's being worked on during the day, it's, it's, we've had a lot of positive feedback on that and it's very, very attractive and it works well for our residents and our businesses. The business came first there, we found that in doing that, that the, the two things were real important in that one. One was Holiday Inn Express, strangely enough, we didn't guess that one, but the people in the area said, "We want that Holiday Inn Express here." Restaurants was the other one, having- Having community restaurants that people could walk to was very important to get that development off the ground, and it's gone really well. But we, I would ask you not to turn this down out of hand. If you want more information, we'll get more information to you on this, 'cause I'm real excited about this development, the family is. And the other thing I mentioned to you, we wanna do this as a master plan while the family's still in a, of one mind on doing this. When it goes to, something happens to one of the cousins and it goes to the kids, you know, things happen in families. We wanna get this done. But I don't, we don't wanna rush you through it, we don't wanna get something done before you're comfortable with doing it. I know you're gonna be comfortable with this, I just need to get the numbers to you on this, doing it. So, we're at your pleasure on this, how you want to proceed. As I said, we, obviously, I'd like you all to proceed this way, but if you don't want to, we're fine with going to the planning commission and showing our plan and showing it to them so that you see the exact plan that we have when you all vote on the annexation and the zoning at the same time. I understand that's the same way that would go, you'd vote on the annexation and the zoning from the planning commission at the same time on that.
You are aware that we have another development, a Townley-style development that's already been approved, the city of Georgetown?
Over on the southeastern portion of the community, yeah.
Yes?
I'm not gonna go on any particular order, I'm trying to take in everything that everybody's saying, and I'm trying to put, I see both sides here. As a landowner, I can understand that the person has a right to be able to sell the property, but at the same time, I mean, I, you know, I'm not a banker, I'm not a realtor, I'm not a developer, I don't own any land, I don't own a business, but what I'm trying to think through is, is, you know, I have two kids in the school system here in town, and even though we don't control the school board, we have no control over what they do or don't do, I do think we have an obligation and responsibility to try to help. Now, we can disagree on that all we like, and I'll respect that disagreement if that comes up. And it, this is not about being anti-growth, it's just trying to get a grasp on what we're doing to make sure that we've got the ability to provide that infrastructure, not just for the city services, but also for the school system. And again, it's not being anti-growth at all, that's the furthest thing from this. You're right, growth really does bring in new opportunities for the entire county, it's just, you know, I would love to see this tabled, and I'll make the motion to table it until we have a definitive plan, and well, I'll just, I'll go ahead and make the motion to table, 'cause I would like to see a definitive plan on what we're looking at. So, I'm sorry I took the long way to get there, but...
That's what this discussion's all about.
Anyone has a voice.
Well, I just wanna go on the record saying that I know, and I am a realtor, and I am a business owner, and I've lived here all my life, and I do understand growth, and sometimes when we don't think outside the box, we can get a little stagnated, and I know that in the comprehensive plan, I have seen the comprehensive plan, I sit on the comprehensive plan when they were putting it together this last time, and over there, where they're talking about, it is slated for residential, and there's only ninety-some acres of that one quadrant that he's talking about that could even be residential because of the contour of the land. So, that's why they're doing it trails and greenbelt. It's been about seven or eight years ago, but, but right now, as of right now, Ball Homes is building next to Northside Christian Church property, that sewer line's there, and if you go on out to 460, there's a commercial growth going on there, and when you come on up here to the other end, you've got the Kroger Center, and then you have McClellan Springs, and you have Ward Hall Estates. All of that's happened right there. So, when you talk about the added services, they're already there. And he's talking about, what they're talking about doing, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, they're just in the first steps of doing it, but it is in the comprehensive plan, and I'm not sure that it's right of us not to follow through with that, when I know that Lemons Mill Elementary up there, they only did half of that, that school's available as well, they redistrict all the time, it doesn't mean that those ninety-some acres is gonna go to Western. It doesn't mean that at all, because the school would redistrict however they need to. I think it's very important that we're conscientious about what we do, but I don't think that we should stop them from being able to go forward. The Planning and Zoning Commission had them come over here to do this first, because that's the steps that they do. That's why the Adams property did it, that's why they're doing this now. So, I don't think it's fair that we table something when it's in the comprehensive plan, that they wanna move forward. It's their land, they've got people coming in, developers, that are willing to invest in our community, that's gonna cause growth, it's gonna cause rev, it's gonna cause revenue, which will, excuse me, give us opportunity to grow the police department and the fire department and the school system. If we don't continue to move forward and do that, we're not gonna be able to expand those. And I know it's a scary thought, but that's my thought, and I'm definitely for it, that's why I sponsored it, and I do understand it, so I just wanted to go on record saying that.
And this body also approved the comprehensive plan. Keep that in mind going forward.
That's true, too.
Mr. Murphy, can I ask you another question?
Yes, sir.
You don't have anyone that's eminently about to, that's interested in doing something right now with the property, so I presume that's the case, that's kinda what I gathered anyway. It takes some time to put together a preliminary development plan, and I know quite a bit of expense as well. Have you already thought about someone to provide that service?
Yes.
You have?
Well, we had to have a survey done to show the legal description of the area that we're asking you to annex, and that was, that was a little novel in this case, because it followed the contour of the land going into the greenbelt. I can't remember what was the 960, what, they had an elevation contour that they had to go out and survey. They, that engineering firm that did that has land planners as well.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna mention, and I'm not trying to give anybody any additional work, Kelly Klepper used to be on our planning, he was director of our planning zone, he worked for Kimley-Horn &amp; Associates down in Sarasota, Florida. They've, they've had a lot of experience in doing a lot of projects, obviously in Florida and some other areas, and they do that without necessarily providing the engineering service. And the level of detail and planning that they do is outstanding, and I just wanted to share that with you as...
That's good, I've seen his work before, yes, it's very good.
You mentioned the Townley Center, Dennis Anderson, they've worked with him, matter of fact, on the Amerson Farm here in Georgetown, as well as the Kroger project.
No.
Andrew?
Oh, if there's any more questions, I'll just, just wanted to point out a procedural, Mark, on your motion to table, I think a table, what we can do is, we can, we can not have a second reading if that's the will of the council, but I think a motion to table is reserved for a motion that's already been made, and I don't think there's been any motion. You really don't, I guess what I'm saying is you really don't table an ordinance that's first reading, you just don't have a second reading yet, so...
Well, here's what I'll say. I mean, they're willing to do what is being requested, you know, what Mark is asking, and I mean, if, you know, if that's, if that's the willingness of the Gaines family representation, I mean, that, like I said, I mean, that's a wonderful scenario if you can get that to play out, and if they're willing to do that, then I guess that's for the betterment of everybody, maybe we can get a consensus that way.
Okay, down this side?
That's fine, whatever you need to do to, I guess, convince us, that'd be...
I really think the majority of the council, I'm not majority, some of the council members won't know how much commercial compared to residential it is. If it was all commercial, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Commercial, we would've jumped on it in a heartbeat.
Yeah, but we...
You don't know what I'm saying, though, but if the, I know the percentage of commercial against the residential is what they're looking for, in my opinion.
Yeah, commercial, you know, I agree with you, Marvin, just with the modification of commercial that we can depend on, that you have lined, you know, relatively lined up that we can...
What kinda timeframe are we talking about to bring the plans?
Well, we can get working on the plans right away and try to, I'm not sure we'll be able to meet the next filing date for the planning commission, but probably meet the next one or the one after that to get...
I was thinking, we have three weeks before we have our next council meeting, and certainly on Brad's request, we need a developer here.
He may not be able to do before the council, until maybe the last of April at the most, because of when planning commission meets, is that correct?
We just reserve the second reading until that...
Yeah, there's no...
Mark, you have your problem, Brad?
Or if necessary, we could have another first reading if there's something that needs to be changed, but...
I'd say leave the first reading the way that it is and what can do that and reserve the second reading for later, if everybody's in agreement for that.
When they're ready, we can, we can put on the agenda for the second reading.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Appreciate the discussion you all've had, and...
Very good.
We're gonna bring a plan back to you that you're gonna wanna pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, I've got a question, and I don't know if this is a parliamentary question, but can we, in a public meeting as elected officials, recommend specifically the services of individuals or companies in this open forum?
I can just say I wouldn't recommend it, how about that?
Okay. This didn't seem appropriate, so I thought I'd ask.
It's a good question, very good.
Okay, second reading of budget amendment?
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, sponsors council members David Lesby and Connie Tackett. Whereas the annual budget adopted by the city council on July 2, 2013, and amended on February 24, 2014, needs to be amended, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Summary, ordinance, 14 death 003 is amended as follows. General fund, intergovernmental city building inspection revenues are increased by $867. Public works expenditures are increased by $33,000. Building inspection expenditures are increased by $1,734. Community service expenditures are increased by $70,237. Grant fund, revenues are increased by $5,000. Fire department expenditures are increased by $5,000. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324. Publicly introduced and read the first time March 17, 2014. Publicly read the second time, and publicly read the second time, March 24, 2014.
Okay, this is second reading.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Tackett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Second reading, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingleseames?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yeah.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, next item, second reading of city clerk salary ordinance, this is sponsored by Mr. Pan.
An ordinance establishing the pay rate for the city clerk treasurer, sponsors council members David Lesby and Brad Pan. Whereas pursuant to KRS 83A 070, subsection 1, the legislative body of each city shall, by ordinance, fix the compensation of every elected city officer not later than the first Monday in May in the year the officer is elected, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Georgetown, section 1. Effective January 1, 2015, the bi-weekly salary of the city clerk treasurer shall be $2,038.46, $53,000 annualized, which salaries shall be adjusted annually according to the Consumer Price Index computation by the Department for Local Government pursuant to KRS 83A 075. With each adjustment retroactive to the first day of the calendar year thereof. Section 2, any and all existing ordinance is inconsistent with this ordinance are repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. Publicly introduced and read for the first time March 17, 2014. Publicly read the second time March 24, 2014.
Motion?
Motion, Mayor.
I'm with you, Ken. Have a second to this motion? Mark?
Sure.
Okay, discussion?
Uh, just one, one thing, Mayor.
I'm setting precedence, the council's...
No, ma'am, you're a candidate for this office, I think it'd be very inappropriate...
Mr. Hartley, at a greater power than our council does, to be able to give someone the right from the public to stand up and talk? I haven't been elected to the position yet, I still have some...
I think for clarification, he was on the agenda, though.
He was on the agenda, and this was on the agenda.
American, we have a first and a second, isn't it, council discussion? We had a first and a second, isn't it, council discussion?
It's council discussion, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying.
Second reading.
To the, to the chair, we have done, I mean, I asked the last first to ask her to, she wanted to come up, I said yes, then, and ask if you could, and you said no, which was fine, you're the chair, and you're the chair now, but we have done that in past times to let people come up and speak on issues that we've asked, the council has asked questions of, we've had questions of. Mr. Pan did that one with building inspection, when we're talking about center of town and things like this, so there is a precedent, so I think it kinda looks bad on the council's part if we're saying she is filing for the office and she does, and she wants to speak on the issue, and we say no, are we gonna say that to other potential council members, people that are filing for council, that if they wanna address us, are we gonna say no to that as well?
We will, yes, we will.
But are we saying that to every citizen that's coming up here?
No, no, not citizens. Once we get our council meeting started, it's council discussion.
Okay, but if council wants, if council wants input from a citizen that's in the chamber, is, are we no longer gonna have that at this point on?
Mayor, I say, let her speak.
Yeah.
Let her speak.
It's up to the council, you make that decision, I'm not...
No, I support, I support.
This is the council meeting?
Let her speak.
I'm saying what I think.
Mayor, I think you, I think we should let her speak, we've, if it's not what we were supposed to do in the past, we've done it a lot of times in the past as far as bringing people...
Mr. Pan?
I agree.
Yeah, we've done it.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I don't have a problem, only thing I'm saying, once we have our first and second, it's council discussion, and then afterwards, that's what I was getting at, 'cause it's really our discussion right now after the second, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. McKeon?
Okay, we've done it.
Mark? Connie?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, it's a council decision, then, you've taken it out of my hands here.
Yes, Mark. I'm okay with this, but I think if Mr. Prather wants to come down and talk, if Mr. Dobbela wants to come down and talk, and it's specific to an issue, then by all means, if she's allowed to do this, then every other candidate filing for a city office is gonna, has gotta be allowed to do the same thing.
I said that last, the last time we met also.
So, I just wanna make that clear, if we're gonna allow this, then every other candidate run for city council, mayor, city clerk, any position, they're allowed to do the same thing.
I think the key is we can't exempt them simply because they're a candidate.
Right.
And had, had we not, had we not allowed other people from the audience to speak from time to time, then I would, then I would agree with you, and I, I'm not sure from a parliamentary standpoint how, how this is, and maybe that would be, maybe that would be a question for a further discussion at some other point. I can understand how, how something like that could easily get out of control, honestly, but I think, you know, we've, Karen made a good point, you know, we let, we let building inspection come up and talk when it was relevant.
Okay, it's your decision. Personally, I go on record, think, I think it's inappropriate, but you've been okayed? Go ahead.
I basically was wanting to be here since I talked to Kentucky League of Cities today about what would be appropriate measures in order to, to give a pay increase to the clerk treasurer's position.
Four minutes, please. I'm sorry, excuse me.
Sorry. Basically, the Kentucky League of Cities was in agreement that under the option that the city had presented is that the ABC coordinator or administrator for the city, if they were getting a pay increase based on... if they were getting a pay increase based on the additional duties of that, um, office, that, um, it would be eligible for all certified police officers who in turn would also, um, are certified under the ABC administration, and also, um, they are the enforcement body, which goes back to the job description in the fashion of, a clerk is not a certified, uh, law enforcement officer, and therefore is not capable of enforcing the law in that, that portion of the ABC administration. Only law enforcement can do that as a certified law officer. Um, in that, on that basis, um, I'm not going to make comment as to the amount and the percentage, but I will say that it is only fair in order to prescribe the same pay increase for the same amount of duties prescribed, or, um, that have been placed on that officer, um, in the clerk's position be equally applied to those who administer those duties in the police office, um, in the police department. Because, um, from what I understand, the clerk treasurer is the admin, they hold the records, and that is it. She may send out the paperworks, um, to the, if someone is found to not be in compliance, but law enforcement actually enforces those laws and the ordinances and licensing for the city. Additionally, um, I don't know, I also heard council speak about, um, the Kentucky League of Cities, um, had issued, I guess, uh, similar pay scales for those positions, and, um, those weren't made available to, I'm not sure if to council, but we didn't receive them in the packet. And, um, from what I understand, um, there are not many, or there are elected clerks, but there are not any elected clerk treasurers. Um, on that basis, I would, um, recommend that they would go off of the basis of elected clerks. Considering that Georgetown is right now, population base-wise, a second-class city, it then, if, if we predict the population growth, um, that we hope to see with Toyota, um, eventually, the, the city will reach on population basis, a first-class city. And therefore, you would not be able to, by law, to combine the two positions of treasurer and clerk. Um, I think it would be just prudent to, um, go on the basis that we're gonna have the continued growth that we've been seeing. So, with that said, um, I would just wanna present that to council. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, council, you have any further discussion?
Just one.
Two points. I think, uh, I saw the old, um, the pay scale summary, the pay scale from KLC, that basically showed a bunch of, um, comparisons among various positions, that pay scale comparison, I think I saw that in previous packets that were in public, um, that's where I saw that. Second point is, is that, um, and I've worked in public service for a long time, in public service, you, you pay for the position, you don't necessarily pay for the person in the position. And, um, I, I think that's maybe where we're going tonight with this. I think Tracy has done a fantastic job in the position. She has literally revolutionized the office of city clerk and what it means to be city clerk. But, um, that isn't necessarily what, you don't necessarily pay for the person in the position, you pay for the position. You set out a description, and then you set a rate for that description based upon the workload for that position description. And I think we're kinda getting the cart before the horse on this one, so I'm gonna vote against this tonight.
What is your last comment, Mark?
I'm sorry.
I said I was gonna vote against this tonight.
Any, any other comments, council?
Yes, Mark? Ju- just for clarification purposes, so I understand completely, and, and for anybody else out there that's in the same boat I'm in. If this gets voted in, when does this take effect?
It says, just, if changes are made, it has to be made by May the twentieth.
First Monday in May.
First Monday in May, and then it becomes, uh, of the elected year, which will be this year. And then it takes effect in January of the following.
So it's not necessarily for the person, it's for the office?
It's for the office.
Right. It's for the office.
It's for the following statute.
Second point is, if this is done, is the city going to have to make any revenue adjustments in, in looking at raising taxes?
No.
Okay. Is the city clerk taking on, these are all questions, I apologize, we're not, stop pausing. The city clerk, has the city clerk taken on additional responsibilities? Absolutely.
And she's only, by statute, a record keeper.
Okay, and then lastly, even though this is a councilman, our council meeting, I apologize, you are the, the chief executive officer, the leader, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is, is be approved.
Okay.
That is my recommendation. Because I think, uh, the extra added duties that have been put on that position, I, I made the statement the last meeting, if we didn't have someone to take that on, as, as Tracy has, we would be hiring someone else, and I know the council doesn't wanna establish another position, because with the staff we have now, they do not have the time to take on that responsibility. Yes, Mark?
Mayor, I talked to another council member before the meeting started tonight, that was the same comment that I made, that even if we hired a part-time person for twenty hours a week, ten dollars an hour, that justifies the raise that we're getting tonight. That would be ten thousand four hundred dollars a year just for a twenty-hour a week person, so.
But we have not passed yet the job description ordinance. I mean, we haven't modified the job description yet.
Right.
If we have already modified that job description, I'd be more sympathetic to the raise, but we haven't actually changed the job description. Yeah.
This has to be done before May, though.
The first Monday in May.
First Monday in May. In May.
So what we did for you, you know what the city clerk has to do by statute, and in that job description, we outlined all of the additional duties that Tracy took on in that office above and beyond that, there were twenty-six items. So those, not just alcohol, but all of those are what's accounting for the adjustment of the pay for the city clerk. When, when and if you approve that ordinance that establishes all of those job duties by ordinance, whomever comes into that office will be required to attend to those duties.
I understand, my point is that, why don't we wait, and we've got two meetings, we've got the two meetings in April. If we want to, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we pass the job description ordinance.
Do it in reverse order, if that you miss.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, we're doing it at the same time.
Then, what, we have it now?
Yeah, or do it at the same time if we want, just make sure, we can do it at the same meeting, but I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure we've got, we put those things in there to tie it down, no matter who gets elected next time, so that we can justify paying that higher salary.
Right, and you still have time to do that, just trying to get it done before the first Monday in May.
We do.
But, we've still got two meetings in April. And we can have a-
What you're requesting?
We can have a first reading on the city clerk job, job description ordinance next meeting, along with a second reading on this.
Well, we just had the first reading for the job description.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, we can have a second reading of the job description.
Yeah, the second reading for it, and vote on it.
Most of these could be voted on at the same meeting.
So what's the parliamentary, uh, way to go about doing this? If there's a motion?
I do wanna point out that you all recommended at least one change to the duties ordinance, so the proper thing to do would be to have another first and a second reading. So that pushes you to the very last meeting in April.
Andrew, is that, is that, is that necessary?
Yeah, substantial change.
Even, is it a substantial?
It's necessary, yeah, it's, I, I don't like, I don't really like that whole substantial, no. If you were changing the word "uh" to "the," I don't think you've got a substantial change, but adding a provision like that is substantial enough that you needed a first and a second reading.
If I can just make a clarification, remember, it's not a job description, it's an ordinance establishing the duties of the-
Establishing the duties. Right.
City clerk. The job description has been bothering me, so just wanna clarify that.
So we have a first and a second? Do we have a first and a second?
We do.
Okay.
We do, on the motion, we have a first and a second.
I'll vote, I'll vote yes if I can get a sense of the council that we're gonna approve the job description ordinance.
I think we have to, Mark.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
While we brought that up.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
But Andrew says, we've gotta wait now anyway, right?
No, on the, on the-
Job duties.
Job duties.
We can bring you a new charter.
The ordinance.
On the job duties ordinance, you need to have another first and second reading on that.
Well, that's fine.
What's different on it?
Uh, somebody, yeah.
Somebody to cover her when she's not here.
Yeah, the ability to delegate, which I think is important.
It is.
To clarify that, yeah.
I think that, I think that's just a formality.
So, I agree.
Yeah.
So the council can vote whichever way they want to, uh, this is a second reading, we do have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
No, it's doing an elected position.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay, this next item, discussion of a lease of farmland at Lanes Run Business Park. We had a request, someone who would like to farm that piece of property out there, of course, we're obligated now to keep it mowed down. I see this as a win-win situation for he and us. Of course, we're gonna have to set up a, a lease, so that he understands if we have a buyer for a portion of that property, that comes first.
Mayor, may I, what is he, farm, is he raising hay or, or corn, do you have any idea?
Uh, I'm not positive. Let, let's start, let's start over first, let me back up a little bit. First, we've actually had two separate people offer to do, one person would like to farm that property, and another person would like to mow it for hay. Either way, I've explained to both of these people that we don't have the ability to simply say, okay, here it is. We actually would have to bid something like that out, it would have to go to the, it would have to go to the highest bidder. Although I agree with the mayor that, that leasing that to someone to either farm it or cut the hay would, would obviously benefit the city, there are, there are some considerations that, that council needs to, to look at, and that's really the reason why we're bringing it up. Um, I've had conversations with, um, Jack, Economic Development, and there are people who are interested in, in a sizable portion of those properties, moving on them relatively quickly. So the, one of the issues is, what happens in June when they decide they wanna take that property over and to start moving on? And I know, I realize things don't necessarily move that quick, but it's possible. The, the standard arrangement, as I can gather it, and I don't know that it has to be that way, but the standard arrangement on something like this is, you say, okay, we're gonna lease this property to you, you're gonna grow crops on it, and if we have to kick you out at any point, then there's some kind of provision for damages. So that would be the risk to the city, is that we would somehow have to, to, to boot this person out and say, we have to tear out your crops. So, I'm not suggesting that we, we don't do it, I'm, I'm saying that council first needs to weigh that out and then determine what route they wanna take, and we actually need to issue sealed bids.
What did Jack Connor, did he have a suggestion for you?
Uh, he doesn't like it.
Well-
But, I think it's-
Does it, does it make it harder to market the, the property, is that why?
It does not, it does not make it harder to market the property unless you're growing something on there that potentially, if a, if a prospective business comes there and sees corn growing on it, and they're not really able to make an accurate survey of the property, that is a problem.
Well, I would suggest to lease it only for the mowing of the hay. And that way, there, you're gonna keep it mowed down, they're gonna benefit getting the hay off of it, and hay's only cut a couple times a year, so, so it shouldn't be an issue with somebody wanting to buy property up there. Now, I would, I would put it in out for bid, for lease, for hay only, with the option that, you know, you might lose your second cutting if, but, you know.
But that's the reason we brought it before you guys.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, that seems like-
I wouldn't wanna put corn, soybeans, stuff like that out there, 'cause, you know, you're paying damage for twenty, thirty acres of corn and soybeans could cost you more than you're getting out your lease, I guarantee you.
You're right, the, the, your concerns are pretty much mitigated when you're talking about hay, 'cause we can be cut at any point without real damage, so.
I mean, and, and if somebody's gonna decide, you'll have a month, six weeks before you have to get off, you'd probably get his hay cut and get out of there anyway, so.
And having those, those hay-cutting leases is really very common.
Right.
Not, I wasn't, really wasn't able to find a whole lot on lease of farm property, it happens, I think, but I think lease of business park property for farming purposes, much less, much less common.
How much is the hay lease, or the last hay lease we did out there?
I don't know, I don't know, the county, I talked to the county, I think they got, they did some hay leasing out at their reservoir, and I think they get like two hundred dollars to do the whole thing.
It's not whole lot.
Yeah, it's not whole lot.
No, I think when you-
The main thing is to keep it clean.
Yeah, we did it one year, and that was what the, the, was, that they would just keep it mowed, and then we did it one year that they actually paid a little, but it was fixed to nothing for it.
Yeah. I mean, it's like seventy acres, the, well, the farmable part is seventy acres, there's actually a lot more that has to be maintained, but it's not suitable for, for agriculture other than to mow the hay.
You can get a pretty good amount per acre of corn, and games, how it is, I mean, it's, it's an amazing amount.
Well, I won't, I mean, I won't, this, you know, the person has suggested paying a, a decent sum of money for it, it's the, it's the risk that you run.
For the-
For the grain row crops, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, farmland is, is valuable for, for that, so, I mean, it's-
Don't we have people out here?
In the areas that, um, can hold this up, I apologize, all of this is occupied area, and all these light areas down here, are the areas we're talking about, this area in blue here is the only part that's really, um, usable for, for farming. The others is, is very rocky and sloped and, uh, this is about, this is about seventy-two acres here. Now, like I said, we have, we have people who are interested in these lots on a pretty immediate basis. Let's not say they're gonna take them, let's not say they might not find the property elsewhere.
I think the mowing thing's a good idea for hay.
I think that's the best route to go with, is keep us from maybe having to pay a lot of money for it.
And they're keeping it clean.
Keeping it clean.
Yeah.
My opinion.
So we need to bid that out.
Either way, either way-
Either way, we'll have to bid it out.
Right.
So, what's the general consensus of, of the council, is that we go with the mowing, or?
I think a simple hay lease, I mean, you, I've heard two or three hundred dollars an acre of corn on lease, but I would just do a simple hay lease because of the difference. I, I think you, I don't, I just couldn't imagine prospective businessmen, businesses going out there and, and saying, hey, here, here, here's, here's a field, and it's full of corn, I mean, I think, uh-
Field of dreams.
Okay, not a park.
Then this is what we'll do. Okay, any, any, any other comments on what you want Andrew to know how to do about the, the park?
I will say one thing, just, uh, FYI, in the mowing of it, uh, that there is a certain amount of time that they need to do it at least so many times to keep it looking, looking decent in between. 'Cause if it's a really rainy year and they don't cut it often enough, it looks really shabby.
Does anybody have experience with that and can suggest a certain number of times?
Marvin, the mowing man.
I, I still think if you cut it twice, and if you have it raining here, you'll have to cut it three times a year. Twice is normally the mark on it.
Cut to you twice, if you're lucky, you get three.
You're lucky, unless it's like, if it's real wet, you're not gonna get-
Does it get to a certain height before the average person says, okay, this is ready to cut, can we put it?
Hay's usually about waste time for you to cut it.
Well, they know, I mean, whoever's to get the bids-
Well, but if we're gonna put a, if we're gonna put in there a provision that says they gotta do it in the contract,
Yeah.
Like to have some kind of standard.
They wanna, I don't know, we didn't have a provision like that the last time.
We'll put it out for bid.
We just kinda gave them the benefit of the doubt that they'd cut, I mean, they, they're obviously wanting to profit off of it, so.
Okay. Mr. Engineer, municipal order approving HGR contract amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Previous council meeting, um, HGR, who's doing our downtown stormwater project design, uh, provided, we provided you with the structural solution to fulfill the recommendations that were provided for in the two thousand one downtown master plan. And at this meeting, uh, you all advised me to modify the scope of work for more of a detention-based, lower structural impact type solution. That proposal, that modified proposal is attached as exhibit D. That proposal, that modified proposal is attached as Exhibit D, and the MO just requested your permission to, uh, accept this proposal.
What, what did we ask?
The, um, structural solution is the most expensive route. It was about five and a half million dollars.
You're right.
The two thousand one master plan that was developed, um, a lot of those recommendations are what we accounted for in that structural plan. If we're not going to resize the downstream pipes as large as they need to be to handle that, we need to go to more of a detention-based.
Right. More time out, like Garth and maybe some of the homes on Broadway.
Right, some ponds. A lot of those pipes are failing, so some of them will have to be replaced, but not to the extent that the structural plan was.
I got you.
Yeah. It says on here, prepare two preliminary plans to construct detention basins upstream of the Rucker Avenue inlet, assuming the purchase of homes in the area by the city. Are we talking about?
These are possible solutions.
Possible solutions. I mean, is there any other solution they're looking at beyond actually buying and, and taking down homes?
Yes, they're looking at, um, current city-owned or, um, school-owned property, um, and beyond. Depends on, on how large of a pond they can get there. And if, if we need a larger pond, that's something that they're gonna have to look into in their study.
So, if, i- is it probable that they're going to come up with a solution that doesn't, that doesn't require us to take down, to buy and take down a, a house or two in order to build a retention pond? I mean, we, we feel comfortable that they're gonna come back with a solution that doesn't mean that we're gonna buy and.
I think I'd feel more comfortable after they do the calculations.
There's probably a likelihood. I mean, unless, unless we can use the school property, then I don't know that we have many options.
Well, even with the school property, you, you've got one right there in between that.
That can be improved.
So, so in essence, I mean, we're talking about the potential. And David said like, I don't know, I don't appreciate it, but, I mean, the potential at least of coming up with a discrete set of solutions that will say you need to take down a house or two at least to build a retention pond to save. How many houses? I mean, how many, how many structures do we feel like we're saving here or, or making habitable? I mean, are, is there any structure right now in this area that is in danger of falling in or, or being uninhabitable? I mean, what do we look?
I, I don't know about falling in, but I do know that they do have water problems in this area.
Water problems, yeah.
It's the same, the same problems we've stated at every other council meeting, same problems that were stated in the downtown master plan. As far as I know, they still exist.
So, you're, you're asking us to spend twenty-two thousand more to complete his preliminary plans and then come back to us, and then how much are we gonna ask to be spent after that?
This includes, um, this is an amendment contract. Uh, the other part of the contract include finished construction drawings.
Okay, and then how much after, at your educated guess, what he's kinda come back and asked us, how much is it gonna cost us to facilitate what he's going to ask us to do?
So, you're asking me for a cost estimate on the plan that isn't developed yet?
Exactly. You're an engineer. You can go down there and see if it's a, if it's gonna be a ditch on the school side, your educated guess would be, are we talking? How much if you're talking about tearing down houses? I mean, do we really have, what I'm saying, getting around to it, is saying we're spending twenty-two thousand dollars to come back and tell us we probably don't have the money maybe to do the rest of it? But can we postpone this for another couple of years? Will it make a difference another year or six months down the road?
I'm professionally not gonna just make a guess standing here on what that cost will be. Um, but, you know, if this is a problem that you all still wanna fix, that's a question you all have to answer.
Financially, that question is, to the council, do we financially have the money to fix that problem even? We know it's been a problem for years, of course, but even with what you, what they have sketchily put into this and come back to us, we spend another twenty-two thousand dollars. Are we really gonna be able to fix the problem after they bring it back to us, or will it sit on the shelf for a while?
You knew the comments.
I don't know. I mean, I, I think there's enough questions. I, I hate, I was on the committee that, uh, helped choose HDR in this project. I just have, I, I kinda moved toward tabling at least, and talking to, to Kyle over the next three weeks to try to come up with some sort of understanding of how many different solutions there are going to be, and whether all those solutions are things I can't possibly vote for. I mean, if it's, if we're talking about tearing down houses in order to make more habitable or make more comfortable a few houses along South Broadway, I don't know if I can really vote for that. I don't know if I can vote for, you know, the solu, the possibility that Karen talked about, solutions that are going to be prohibitive in terms of cost. Now, I'd like to sit down with Kyle and, and try to figure out exactly what the possibilities are that this, uh, study will, will yield and see if any of those possibilities are things that I could possibly get behind, and if I can't get behind any of the possibilities, there's no reason to spend a hundred and three thousand dollars or twenty-two thousand dollars in order to, in order to.
Well, didn't we suggest spend eighty-one thousand six hundred? Have we already spent that money, Kyle?
The, yeah, please, just spent almost fifty.
Already.
I will say that the last thing, and I've, I've spoken to Ann specifically about, Ann Leader, specifically about this, the last thing that I wanna do is, is displace someone or tear down a part of, you know, our downtown. So, a lot of these, these solutions are obviously detention-based, but since, since the volume-based solution is not some, is too expensive and not something that, that we wanna undertake at this time, you know, there's gotta be give somewhere else, and the only place to really do that is just south of that inter, um, north of the intersection of Hamilton, Gert Clayton and.
Mark, is that your suggestion?
I'll make a motion to table.
May, may I say one more thing?
Sure.
The account that that money's coming out of was an account Eric had started right before I, that budget that, right before I started here. That was for an extension of this project from, from that large swell that we have along Clayton. Um, that, that money was for designing something for that section, so it's not like this is money coming out of nowhere. This is money that, um, is almost directly tied to this.
Swell kinda behind the houses on Clayton.
Swell from, um, South Hamilton on Clayton to Broadway. About eight feet wide, five.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about. Sorry, yeah, okay. I just didn't know what swell meant.
Sorry. Ditch. Culvert.
Rain.
Hey, Kyle, quick question. When the committee approved the eighty-one thousand six hundred, I mean, did they, did they have some idea of what was gonna be involved in trying to remedy the problem?
Well, yes, I mean, a lot of it was, was outlined in this.
Right.
Where they upsized pipes to handle the twenty-five-year storm. That's why we focused on the structural solution. Displace, the possibility of displacing people is less. You don't cause a lot of above-ground disturbance where you need a lot of area for detention ponds. It's underground, and it's the long-term solution for most stormwater issues.
Yeah. What was the estimated cost on that?
It was around five-five.
Yeah, I've, I've just been told I need to make a motion, motion to postpone rather than table and make a motion to postpone till next meeting.
Okay.
Just need a second.
Second.
Second. Okay.
Would, would council like me to have, um, Keith Messenger, the engineer from HDR here?
That'd be fine, yeah, and I'll try to get with you.
Okay.
If we can, if you can contact HDR to try to get some sort of idea of what the possibilities are, and then we'll sit down and talk about it. Does that sound good?
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
I don't know how long number twelve's gonna take. I'd like to request that, uh, we move thirteen up to this position. Bob patiently waited here just to get the two items.
Three.
You added one? Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you for moving me up, though. Appreciate it. First is approval of a purchase order in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents to Kohli Contracting, Brazilian and real, and relining thirteen manholes. This is the only vendor we could find that would give us a ten-year warranty on their work. That's why we selected them, and they have the necessary equipment to reach these manholes, which are in people's backyards, basically. And I, uh, gave you a map of the ones we're planning on doing. This is a, it's a problem area during high rainfalls. We do get high flows at the pump station, and we're trying to alleviate that.
Mayor, make a motion for approval.
Motion, Mr. Lesby.
Second, Mayor.
Yet, uh. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next one?
Next one is approval of the bid of ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents from Twin State Utilities for the Estacor Water Main Replacement Project. Uh, the apparent little bidder was unable to obtain the required performance bond, uh, so we went to the next highest bidder. His references, uh, checked out excellent. Uh, this was a line item in the fiscal year two thousand fourteen budget to do this project and, uh, recommend, uh, and request council approval on that.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
And you have a.
I also laid an endendum on your, all's desk on our letter. It's dated, uh, today, March twenty-fourth. Uh, question approval of a purchase order in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents to Xylem Water Solutions for a flight pump, pump base and guide rails, uh, to replace one RAS pump at wastewater point number three. Currently, that pit has three pumps in it. We can operate on two, uh, but now that this one is out, we only have two to operate with. We don't have the backup. Uh, we had one pump fail back in the fall. We replaced that one. You all may remember this is the second one, and I'm concerned about the life expectancy of the third one. They were all installed in nineteen ninety-three, so, time is sort of the essence of this, and we have another pump fail. We're gonna have a serious problem. There's about a six to eight week timeline to get a pump ordered. Uh, they have told us if we order a new one, they will supply us a longer for the next, uh, two months for free until the new pump comes in, so we're sorta, sorta pushing on this one a little bit.
Make motion.
Discussion? Motion?
Second.
No discussion.
Can, can we do this, being that this was not on the agenda? I mean, I understand that there's a precedent for an emergency situation, but we can?
Well, this is an emergency. A wastewater.
Yes.
Definition of an emergency.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask you a question for you, Lee?
Sure.
We just got through talking about, um, HDR engineering, and, and one of the comments is made that we needed a video inspection of the existing storm drainage. Is that something, what, something you might be able to do?
Um.
You do have a camera, right?
Yeah, it's really not sized for, uh, stormwater.
Just curious, just curious, because that's, they said that was not in the bid, and it probably cost another five, ten thousand dollars to get that done, so.
Yeah, our camera's really not sized for that. It's not, it's not big enough. Wouldn't project enough light for y'all to see anything, yeah. I do have a point of clarification about an article that was in the News Graphic on Saturday that Georgetown Water paid twenty-one thousand dollars to the Board of Education for water line easements, and I wanna give you the Paul Harvey rest of the story on that since it wasn't in the article. Reason we have to move those water lines is because the state, uh, Transportation Department is widening four sixty between the bypass and Cayman Creek, Cayman Road. So, we have to move that line. That's our line from Frankfort. Uh, we can't do without it. And whatever our expenses are on that project will be reimbursed a hundred percent by the state. So, I want you all to know that it's not on the right payers, that it's not out of our budget. We'll get that money back, so that's the rest of the story on that.
On the Frankfort Air Connect, has there ever been any, um, movement as far as trying to fix that bottleneck along four sixty or any sort of? I know that's something that's been, been talked about for, for gosh, a long time, but I mean, in terms of, in terms of what we look for, water needs in the future, uh, are, are we ever talking about fixing that?
Uh, we have cheaper solutions available.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be very expensive to do that.
All right.
There's cheaper ways to do it.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, break time. You will get back to station.
I thought you were gonna take it.
Take five.
And, and you know, I just wanted to reiterate.
Good regular session. Next up is finance, interlocal budget presentation. This comes from your meeting with the judge, correct?
Yeah, most of it. Some of them are joint agencies, but as indicated on the schedule for budget preparation, bringing you the interlocal and a couple of the community services that had gotten budgets into me. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna very quickly go over what we adopted for the budget for these agencies for the current fiscal year, what they are requesting from the city for the new fiscal year. They will allow for some discussion and decide how we want to move forward as far as, we're not requesting any approval tonight. This is just kind of your first look, whether we want to bring these back at another meeting or a workshop, and how we want to, to handle that. So presenting the Park Center Recreation Budget for their operating, six hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty was last year's line item, seven twenty oh forty-one for the current request. The Ed Davis Center, which is one hundred percent city funded, oh, I'm sorry.
Can you, I'm sorry, I apologize. Can you repeat that, that second number you just gave?
Yeah, and you should've had it in the packet. I don't know if you've got yours with you, but I had all this outlined for you in the packet, so you should have that. And I also provided you the prior year's budgets for comparison. So six sixty-four, eight fifty, Parks and Rec, current year, seven twenty oh forty-one, for a difference of fifty-five, one ninety-one. The Ed Davis Center, which is one hundred percent city funded. We had in our line item ninety thousand in the current request, one oh four, seven thirty-nine. I know, but this current year a hundred, but I think we had cut that. So I showed an increase from our budget of fourteen, seven thirty-nine. Parks and Rec capital request, last year was twenty-five thousand, current year ninety-four thousand, three hundred, for an increase of sixty-nine, three hundred. I did not see, as long as I didn't interpret it wrong, any capital request for Ed Davis this year. Planning and zoning, current year, three sixty-eight, three eighty-one, with a fourteen fifteen request of three seventy, three forty-nine, a difference of one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight. EMS, one million, six fifty-three, oh forty-nine, thirteen fourteen. Next year request of two million, forty-five thousand, three seventy-five, for a difference of three-hundred-ninety-two thousand, three twenty-six. I'm gonna stop on this one for just a second.
Oh, good idea.
I wanna just go ahead, the main increase on this, if you look at their medical supplies and equipment line item, went from one hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, because they're requesting to replace all of their cardiac defibrillators.
So how much of that is, how much of that medical supplies line is the cardiac defibrillator?
Um, I can get some further clarification. I also wanna take that opportunity to get any questions that you all have.
How does that compare to last year's number?
It was, well, the line item last year was a hundred thousand, and it went to five hundred this year, so I'm assuming the majority of that is the cardiac defibrillators. Then they're also requesting, I believe, a new vehicle and some repairs to another one, so they've obviously cut some areas, because that particular line item jumped four hundred, and the total increase is three ninety-two. They showed an increase of revenue of just twenty thousand dollars, so obviously it wasn't all made.
This is just our half, so their actual increase for that would've been four, six-hundred and, seven-hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Yes. Yes, yes, if you look in that particular part, yeah, the grand total was four million, ninety, so our half of that was two million, forty-five. Collections of one million, three seventy-five, which I think might've been twenty thousand more than what they estimated last year, total, so ten thousand for our half.
One question I have on that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not having taken out the medical supplies, because I didn't know how much of that was capital, but I'll have to adjust that. But I took out the number for the, for the capital on the, on the vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
And they're, they're recouped, they're, they're, last year, I think they recouped something about forty percent of their expenditures. This year, they're recouping only about thirty-five percent of their expenditures on their billables, on what they're getting in his revenue. Do you have any, I mean, do they have, I, well, I thought we were supposed to get more based upon the new billing, yeah, billing system.
Company. I will get more information on that. I don't have an explanation.
There was supposed to be an improvement there by you.
Particular.
The other question I have, and this is kind of a finance question on this, because we are, even though we don't manage the agency, we are kind of in the business of providing ambulance service through this agency. Can you find out how many of their runs total are billable runs? That is, runs when they leave the station and they take somebody to a healthcare facility, whether it be the doctor's office or a hospital, how many of those are, how many of those, those are billable runs, and if they're empty, going back to the station, they're nonbillable. Can you find out how many of their, what percentage of their total runs are billable?
And I will ask about the revenue, because I know, I know you all were expecting to see an increase in revenue due to the new.
We've heard about seventy percent of them are billable, but I just kind of want, want to see if we can come up with a hard and fast.
Okay, I will get that information.
All right, thank you.
That information is available, I'm sure.
Oh, I'm sure. And.
And I guess, along those same lines, some specifics on the medical supplies?
To see if that entire four hundred thousand is truly the amount of the defibrillators. Okay, sorry.
They're also asking, one more question.
Mm-hmm.
They're also asking, saying that five percent, they're, they're paying the billing company five percent of all collected. Is that five percent added on to the cost, added on to the bill, or is that five percent paid for by us? I mean, in other words, when you get a bill, is the customer paying that five percent?
Directly, or is it the?
Directly, are we, are we responsible for that five percent?
I guess I'll ask this, if we're gonna go through, are we not going to have an opportunity to, to talk to the interlocal department directors in here? I mean, Jerry's here, and...
I can certainly, I know Jerry, Jerry knew we were presenting tonight, not that I specifically asked her to be here, but when I emailed and requested her budget, she knew she was gonna be here tonight. And I know P and Z asked for their budget, because I said I'm presenting on the twenty-fourth. I did not specifically invite them or ask them to come. And I didn't make any specific contact with the county directors. That's why I said from this meeting, this is kind of your first look, and we can go from how we want to address this. So if we wanna set up this workshop or bring them back at the next meeting, then we can certainly do that. I kind of wanted to get your questions this time, and then kind of just give you your first look, because I had set this date and told you I would have them to you, so.
To me, it's just like, I'm just kind of telling them, you know, through you, or, you know, for them to be ready for whatever questions we have when they finally come to us.
Yeah, and I certainly asked, you know, if we want to, if it's a will of the council at the end of this discussion, that we come back at the next April fourteenth meeting, and I, you know, send an invitation to those directors to come prepared. Please feel free throughout these next couple of weeks to go ahead and email me some questions, so I can send those on to those directors, so that they can be prepared for whatever you might ask. Obviously, anything you tell me tonight, I'll write down and forward on, but anything that may come up after this meeting, please do send that to me.
When does the county have to have their budget in? What's their deadline?
I believe it's around the first of May that they have to have it into the state. It's, it's in May. I know you were sort of D L G, probably a good idea, but.
I think it'd be very important for us to go through our interlocals and have that, a solid figure here for them to know exactly what we're agreeing on.
I'm sure they would appreciate that, and that's why the judge and I tried to get these to each other earlier this year, so that, so that we could do this.
That's the reason we set up the meeting, so we could get advance on, on, on the numbers.
Well, one of the things is that we just got all of these numbers in our pocket just over the weekend, and I don't know about anybody else, but I know I was busy most of the weekend, so I really just got to print mine off Sunday. And I was gonna make a suggestion, because I sat on that interlocal committee meeting, and to request to get these numbers earlier than usual, which they have done, and I just felt like that maybe if it was the consensus of the council, that we could maybe have a special call meeting just specifically for the interlocals and go over these numbers, and do it sooner than later. I'm even in favor of next Monday, the thirty-first, and then that gives us two more weeks before the next regular council meeting. That's just a suggestion, but I just would like to.
That's a good suggestion.
And offer an opportunity to kind of go through this.
I'd like to get these interlocals all set up and ready to go.
That's fine with us. I would, I would be fine with that if we could request that the department heads be here.
Well, it would be specifically a special meeting for the interlocals, and they, they're welcome to come, and I, I would make a motion to do that next Monday, same times at, at six o'clock, and invite the, the directors, and that gives us a week to go through these numbers, and if we've got any questions, we can email Stacy and then come more prepared.
The more questions you can email, and, and the more preparation we could do on the front end, the, the shorter our meeting would be.
But just for clarification purposes, so, the county has not approved any of these numbers yet?
I don't believe they have. I know the, uh, judge and I just met last Tuesday afternoon in exchange fees.
He's pretty much got his budget set, though.
Mm-hmm, he, I mean, obviously.
Which would include?
These.
These numbers, their half?
But the reason why we have them early is so that we can determine what.
I mean, he can make, he can make any changes.
Because obviously, like, last year, we were making our changes in June, after his budget was already sent to the state, so he has not yet sent it to the state.
Andrew, with, with your experience with the D L G, we've talked about this, having to have this budget in as early as possible, and I, and I agree that we should. If, if the change is made after they submit their budget, what do they have to do? I mean, is it a huge process for them to?
As long as it's not a change to the form and classification, they can make, they can make changes of, of amounts, line item to line item. The department only approves as to form and classification of the budget, so as long as they get the finalized budget within thirty days, I believe it is, after the end of the fiscal year, there's no problem.
Okay.
I think we're way ahead of the game by getting the numbers that we have now, and certainly by having this workshop.
And I'll make a second to, to Connie's motion, but keep in mind, even if we feel like we need to change something, and the county has to put their budget in, they don't have to change their budget just because we do.
Exactly.
But still, it's nice to have a communications, well, maybe we're not gonna.
It is.
Six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to match it.
It is. Okay, I hear, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
March thirty-first, is that what we're?
With first, at six o'clock on Monday, the thirty-first.
Yes, next Monday.
Special call meeting, interlocals only.
That's it, yeah.
And the directors are welcome to come.
Thank you, Connie.
You're welcome.
I think more than welcome to come, I think we should request them to come.
Okay. Requested.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Are we gonna let Stacy finish that?
I would just gotta finish reading off the next six or seven amounts real quick. Just, just since this is my presentation, make sure I.
Connie, you got a showing tonight.
Huh? What did you say?
Well, I do have, no.
I'll be fast. EMA, current year, one oh nine nine sixty, request fourteen fifteen, one twenty-two, four forty-two, for an increase of twelve thousand, four eighty-two. Electrical inspection, current year, one twenty-one, one seventy-two, fourteen fifteen, request of one thirty-seven, three seventy-three, for an increase of sixteen thousand, two oh one. Animal shelter, obviously this one's gonna show a discrepancy because of the changes we made last year. Current year adopted, one sixty-two, one oh five, fourteen fifteen, request of two twenty-nine, two thirty-two, for an increase of sixty-seven thousand, one twenty-seven. And you will see that this year, the judge did include a good breakdown of how much of the salaries we pay compared to them. It was the second sheet attached to their budget, so you can look at that. Scott County United, current year adopted thirty thousand, fourteen fifteen, request thirty-three thousand, seven fifty, which puts them back up to, I think, a prior funding level, increase of three thousand, seven fifty. Senior Citizens Group, current year adopted, and next year request, ninety-seven thousand, no change. And HGI Main Street, of course David was here earlier, thirteen fourteen, adopted a forty-two thousand, seven fifty, fourteen fifteen, request of fifty-five thousand, for an increase of twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Any questions?
I have a question, or, or a request, actually. You've done a real nice summary up here of breaking out what the expenditures or the request is. Could you do a sheet similar to this as to what the revenue for each of those departments have been, and then what we're expecting it to be for this year, to compare that as well? Because we were talking about that with EMS.
So you're thinking the net won't be the six forty-five?
Right.
Yes, any rev, potential revenue increases that, and these would be revenues that come to us.
Right.
There's really, there's only a few that we actually receive revenue from, but I can't tell you off the top of my head, I think EMS only increased like twenty thousand dollars total, so ten thousand.
Electrical inspection, don't we get a little bit of revenue from that?
I think we budgeted fifty, and they're estimating sixty, so another ten thousand.
And then Parks and Recreation doesn't exactly have revenue that comes to us, but they generate revenue, know where they're, what they did and what they're.
Yes, so they're, if you look at Parks and Rec's budget, they have a greater increase in expenditures than what we're being asked to.
Okay.
They do have an increase in some of their program revenues that are helping to cover some of their increased costs. So yes, I can add that to this summary.
Okay, thank you.
One last question on the request. Of course, these are the interlocals, I guess you would consider outside or joint agencies. I do have the budgets for our own interlocals. Would you let me go ahead and bring those on March thirty-first as well?
Yes.
I do have those, so I'll add those, I'll, I'll put those as a separate sheet and, and have those as well.
Do you think you can email those to us?
Yeah, I can go ahead and email those to you, yeah, tomorrow.
Thank you.
Did you say, did you have an idea on the revenue for EMS last year?
Yeah, I, it's, I have them both here. Give me a second. I just seem to remember that it was twenty thousand total, so our increase was only, so I think the current, or the fourteen fifteen estimated collections are one million, three seventy-five.
That's right.
And the thirteen fourteen, current year, was, sorry, one million, three fifty-five, so they were only projecting a twenty thousand dollar total increase in revenue, so our share of that would be ten. So they were only projecting a twenty thousand dollar total increase in revenue, so our share of that would be ten thousand increase.
Less than, uh, I mean, that's le, certainly less than a percent, I mean, well, not less than a percent, but just a few percent.
Any other questions? Like I said, please, I will email you, uh, the reports for our interlocals tomorrow, so that you have those on hand, um, re, expected revenues as well as expenses. And then, um, I will try to get responses to these questions as soon as possible, so I can go ahead and email them to you before Monday, and please send me any other questions, hopefully by Thursday or so, so that I can maybe get your response before the meeting on Monday.
I did have one other, we've, I think we've actually talked about it before with the E M A revenue.
Mm-hmm, yes, and I apologize, I, I do have a response to that question you had sent me, um, we called over-
We can discuss that, we can discuss that.
Well, I was gonna say real quick, the revenue that we had been getting from them, we got two payments this year. It was from a state grant.
Okay.
Um, they will not be getting that next year, is my understanding. So, uh, I think they said we may have one more payment coming, but that's it. Uh, but otherwise, E M A does not have a typical revenue stream that we get any share of.
Where were we, where were we reporting that?
I'm gonna have to set up a separate revenue account for that. We did not have a revenue account for E M A set up.
Where, where was it going in years past, though?
The grant?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I looked, and I did not see any such payments in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve fiscal year.
Can you check on that, cause I know they've received that grant for about, I think, the last four or five years.
I'll look at it, um, I know I tried looking in the expense account, which is where the current year deposits got, uh, deposited, um, and I didn't see anything, uh, in, uh, at least twelve and thirteen. I don't know if I went all the way back to eleven, but I will, uh, look at, call them and ask about that. I didn't, I couldn't find it easily when I looked. Sorry, I'm just writing my question. If you don't have any more questions, I'm done. Get out of the way, so Chief Fosse can.
We put, uh, fifty-five police applicants through our police officers professional standards testing this morning for one position, which is a pretty good, will get us a good candidate. Um, and then, of course, Todd Stone will, his, his vacancy will create another position, um, but we'll have a good, good list of applicants.
Thank you, Chief.
Council comments?
Mayor, I do have one.
Go ahead.
As, as I left, come down here tonight, I turned from Pocahontas onto Broadway. As I passed in front of Indian Acre Shopping Center, the traffic was bumper to bumper from in front of Indian Acre Shopping Center all the way to Main Street. Not the first time it's happened.
Right.
When we had District Seven in here, doing the proposal and showing us what they were gonna do, they made a comment to us that if it didn't work out or we found issues with it, that we could readdress it. Um, I still get calls about this, and I know other members of this body does. I think it's time that we at least write a resolution, um, asking them to reconsider, asking them to provide us with more information. Um, I think we need to probably work with our police department, and it, and if they have any calls related to it or recs that are related to it, or, uh, we need to do something to that. That, it's, it seems to me that it's getting much worse than it even was initially. Um, so I guess I'll throw that out to council if we would be interested in, in looking at a resolution, um, in, or any form of communication with District Seven, uh, to address this, this continuing issue.
I have one question for you, just to kinda throw out there. Do you think, or do you think that the Department of Transportation might think that when the last leg of the bypass actually does get finished and it's usable, that that will eliminate some downtown? You don't think so?
No. People downtown is coming downtown.
I, I, it ju, it seems to me like it's getting worse. Um, you know, today was probably as far back as I've ever seen it. And, and you can see cars, you know, kinda jetting around the other ones to cut off the back streets, much the way I did to get downtown on Clayton. Um, so I, I just, there's gotta be a better solution, and they did make the commitment to us when we voted on it that night, that if we continue to have problems with it, that they would reconsider, so...
I'll join you in, I'll join you in resolution, I'm not so sure it'll be much good, but at least, at least the council has, and I would send it to, uh, I would send it to our senator and send it to our representative as well-
Absolutely.
-with that, so I'll join in, in that, because I sit there and fuss, stand in line, takes forever to get from there to there.
That's a mess.
I think, I think the main, uh, main issue for me is, I just, I've heard people say that, uh, it's forcing a lot of traffic through residential neighborhoods, I think that's the biggest. And we've had some incidents even after, you know, who knows if you can tie them to that decision to make it two-lane, but, um, it's not good to try to, you know, force through traffic on a road that everybody knew was gonna always be four-lane, or at least we thought. And it's a federal highway, by the way, in a city of thirty-one thousand, and it's the main way you get from north to south in Georgetown, and almost the only way on an odd grid format. Um, so, you know, I mean, the only natural outcome to what Brad's talking about in terms of that much traffic is to force people onto side streets, so...
So do you think, um, having Andrew write up some kind of resolution for us to sign and, uh, get to our-
Yeah, I think I had a resolution, you know, you can use that resolution that I had way back when voting on.
Is that okay with council?
I think probably the majority feels that way.
We're just, we're just asking them to kinda report to us and tell us, you know, what the results are. Cause, you know, one of the things that I do recall them saying is that, um, traffic would, you know, they said it would flow better, I believe, y'all might recall verbatim what they said.
They did.
But they said that it, it might back up longer, but it might flow better. So, you know, you have a longer line, but it'd be moving quicker. I don't know.
Well, the head- The problem is, though, you've got, you've got several stoplights there that are, that are continuing the issue, and then the congestion with people trying to go around, it's, it's creating an issue. I guess I should ride a bike.
Yes.
So that's the journey.
Oh.
Yeah, you hold your breath for that one.
Any other comments?
Uh, we do have Jerry here, and, uh, I know she had, maybe had some concerns about the budget, and I know she stayed the entire meeting, so if there's anything you'd like to say regarding the, uh...
Thank you, um, I just wanted to kind of, I guess, Monday we'll go over everything more in detail, um, which I think is, is a great idea, giving us the opportunity to come forward and, and speak about some things. Um, our, um, budget that I submitted to Stacy and, and obviously to the county, um, and to the mayor, does reflect an increase this year, um, in asking for some things that we had. One of the things, the, the items in that is it, is, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars for the sufficiency issue that, um, that we're partaking in, um, with the city as well. So please note that of that fifty-five thousand, one ninety-one, thirty-five thousand of that, um, is the sufficiency, um, contribution, or I guess it would be half of that, the thir, half of the thirty-five thousand would be that sufficiency issue. Um, so while there are some, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
How was your computers and all running before, before that? I mean, if that was taken out of your budget, or you, you took money out of your budget and you decided to say, okay, let's take that out of the budget? How was your computers working before, were you having major problems and stuff, and what was the issues?
Um, we have, we have had some issues in the past, and we've been very fortunate that the software that we use, um, and you'll notice that's one of the items on our capital budget as well. Um, but one, one of the things that we've been able to do is the software programs that we've had for memberships, that they're at the pavilion specifically. We've had, um, support system with that. That has since ran out, that ran out, I think, November of last year. Um, so we've had some issues. If that system crashes like it did two years ago, we are in some major, major trouble, because we do not have the support now to back up what we need to back up and to fix the problems in that membership, um, software. Um, we've had some issues with our servers going down and things like that. Um, Andrew and, and I did come to the I T meeting, um, this past Thursday, um, and talk with them, you know, about some things. Um, and quite honestly, I'll tell you, as, as I've told Andrew and as I told the judge, Karen, you know, if the thirty-five thousand dollar line item being in there causes the council or the fiscal court to look at removing additional funding someplace else within my budget, I would tell you that that's not a priority for me. Because the, the biggest line item that I would have in that would be salaries, which I think makes up about sixty-five to sixty-seven percent, and that's part-time and full-time, kind of like what your all's budget is now.
Right.
Um, and that goes along with all the FICA and retirement and everything that we pay in, and that's about sixty-five to sixty-seven percent of our budget. So that would be the only place that we would have enough span to take that amount of money out of. Um, and quite frankly, for me, it's not worth losing personnel and services that we would be able to provide to the community if we lost that amount of money.
How much would it cost you to go back on the system that you were having that backed up before? How much would it cost you to go back to them?
Well, we're looking at, it would have to be an upgrade completely of that software program, so we're looking about the same amount.
Okay.
Um, but we are looking in that as well. Um, if, prior to that, it was specifically just for the software program and support just with that software, and we are looking at some options to combine efforts with that, to do some storage spaces, some server backup, and, and basically some other things with that. You know, one of the things that I do have concerns about, that I did meet with the I T committee last year, or last Thursday to, um, express was, you know, obviously, security is an issue. I mean, we do, we don't, while we don't have as much as what the city has, um, we do have quite a bit of information, um, that does need to be protected and, and, um, confidential stuff that needs to be secured, so we're definitely looking at that. Um, and part of that software program would fall into that, just because we do, um, process those applications with information that needs to be secured.
So you're okay if, if the money works out all right, you're, you, you don't have a preference over one, coming in with the city with what we're currently talking about doing versus going back to the books that you had before?
Well, either way, that system is going to have to be updated, and sufficiency cannot update that part, that software program for us. Now, they can aid us in helping to, and, and Andrew may be able to, um, explain this more. They can help us in trying to find a cheaper system that would be compatible to what we have now. Basically, they can be a middleman, as opposed to us taking the time to make those phone calls to find or bidding it out. Um, but they don't actually carry that program that we would need in that. Um, so the other challenge would be, you know, obviously, making sure the system that we have right now would not support sufficiency. Um, I just, I would be too afraid that with the age of it and what we have right now, that it would end up crashing the system, and then-
Point of clarification, that part of that, the sufficiency contract itself is only twenty-seven thousand of that. The rest is a one-time upgrade to, to get your equipment up to where it needs to be, so that it can run.
That's correct.
That's your sixteen users, twenty-seven thousand.
That's, yes, sixteen users.
Twenty-seven thousand total.
Yeah.
And I did put the additional thirty-five in there, as, as Andrew said, because we do have some equipment, uh, much like everybody, that has to be upgraded or purchased to be able to utilize the sufficiency, um, package at all.
Didn't we account for this, though, when we did the ninety-one, when we said the ninety-one thousand? When we said the ninety-one thousand is the city's share, the city's impact of what we would be looking at when we adopted the sufficiency contract?
Well, obviously, um, I know the eighty users, all of that's contingent. I know, um, sufficiency has come and explained that to you all, Andrew's explained that to you all, that, that having the network engineer on site for three to six months is contingent on eighty users. Um, tho, those eighty users will be split between the city, Parks and Rec, planning and zoning, building inspection, electrical inspection. Um, if you look carefully at like electrical inspections budget, you will see an additional six thousand dollars in there for their portion of the sufficiency contract. So it is being split amongst everybody. Um, we're having, we have to have the eighty user agreement to get the network engineer, engineer on site for three to six months. Um, obviously, our budget amendment is taking care of the three months of this contract or so that would be left for the rest of this fiscal year. Um, obviously, moving forward into a new fiscal year, we would need to account for that portion of the contract in each of these budgets, which you've seen they've done, and, and the others have done as well. If you read through planning and zoning's notes, you'll, they address this as well in their notes, um, in their budget.
But on the, when we said, or the city's share of the, I think it was one thirteen was the total?
Yeah, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and I think the city's share-
Is ninety-one?
Yeah. Uh, I'm showing, out of eighty users, the city having forty-eight, at about eighty-three thousand two-ten for a full-year contract, for a twelve-month contract.
And then the rest of the thirty-two users are either-
Uh, Parks, P and Z, building inspection, electrical inspection.
And so the split there is fifty-fifty on those other thirty-two, right?
Yes.
So what's the total impact to the city?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, yes, I see what you're wanting. Hmm, probably about, unless I'm adding this wrong, is about a hundred, probably.
About a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So that's the full accounting of all the costs to us of even the sixteen users at Parks and Rec funding them.
I'm sorry, it's a hundred ten nine forty-seven?
A hundred and one ten nine forty-seven.
Andrew did this, it's on there, he's got it already counted. He did, yes, he's got that each, the half of each of ours, so yeah. Total fiscal impact to the city's a hundred ten nine forty-seven for our half. Our forty-eight users plus our half of all of the interlocals.
So that, uh, yeah, okay, that contemplates the sixteen users at Parks and Rec, or at least our share of that, so I mean, I... We've already passed the budget amendment for the not, for the one-ten, right, for the entire users, is that correct?
For, for the rest of this budget year.
For the rest of this fiscal year.
Obviously, as we go forth in adopting the fourteen fifteen budget, we will need to account for the remainder.
But if we've already accounted for them now, it's probable that we're gonna go ahead and do it in the next fiscal year as well. I mean, I, I guess my point is that we've made, we've made the, the commitment to the contract. We've done it both in terms of voting for the contract, and now voting for a budget amendment. I don't think, I don't have any problem, whatever we need to do, accounting-wise, finance-wise, in order to make it work for Parks and Rec, which is, you know, half our agency, to do it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't see a problem there, so... I don't wanna cut staff to pay for the contract. At the same time, we understand the contract helps obviate the need down the road for, for more staff over in the I T department, so... That's what we're looking at. So it'll lay all fears.
I'm here, a quick question for, for Jerry, just a quick question. Is the, uh, you've got thirty-five thousand in capital for, as you put it, software equipment, but also thirty-five thousand in, in the budget? Is that, that's two, are you meaning two different?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanna clarify.
Because either way, either or, whether the sufficiency was able to be approved or not, we still needed that for the software program in order to connect with the other computers for sufficiency to work with new software program for memberships.
What's the five, then clarify, either you or Andrew can clarify, and the difference between the twenty-seven and, and the five thousand, which equals, doesn't it, thirty-five?
That's for computers that would either need to be purchased or computers that would either need to be upgraded. Um, the cost of purchasing the things to upgrade those, um, and you can kind of go into more detail with that, um...
You talking hardware or software? I don't, I-
Both. There's some computers that we have that will not, sufficiency will not support. Um, so we can either upgrade the software programs with that being Windows and upgrading that-
In hardware that does, that would be able to continue?
That's correct.
Or new hardware with new soft, software as well?
Um, it's, yeah, well, it's an either-or. I mean, the way we have it lined out, if we obviously buy, if we buy new software, I'm not, um, looking at, that may be something that will automatically go in with sufficiency and that would be placed, is that not?
For the most part, the computers that you all need to replace, my understanding is they're old computers on X P, and those need to be fixed. The, the benefit is they're able to, as long as we have the sufficiency contract, they're able to purchase a very baseline computer.
Yes.
You know, my understanding is they're somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand dollars, and all of the, the productivity software comes as a package.
Four hundred and fifty bucks, don't scare him.
Four hundred and fifty, sorry. I don't know what I said.
Don't scare him, Andrew.
Thousand, sorry.
That's a problem, too.
It's late, like, I'm usually in bed by now.
Main screen.
Yeah. But the, my, my point is that the, the productivity software, the stuff that most people are gonna be using on a daily basis, comes as part of the sufficiency package. Now, they also have software that needs to be upgraded in the whole agency, as I understand it.
Correct.
Like, the software that you all use to run your membership.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if you all have a cost estimate on that. All I know is that I think you all have somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to ten computers that need to be replaced, and, you know, four hundred and fifty, five hundred dollars piece.
And I do have that breakdown, if you want me to email it to Stacy, she can email that to you all as well, and that way you have a breakdown of everything that isn't that.
Sure, that, cause I, that's my question, I didn't know if the, if the language, cause in, on- Sure, that, cause I, that's my question. I didn't know if the, if the language, cause in, on the, like I said, on the capitals page, it's, it says software, equipment. I don't know if that means software and equipment, or software and hardware, or software alone.
It's just the software alone.
Okay.
On that.
But in addition to that, hardware has to be replaced.
And that is, and that's in, the reason that that thirty-five thousand was put into capital is because it truly is defined as a capital. It's a one-time lasting five years or beyond. So, I, you know, that is why that particular software was put into as the capital expense. Um, the, um, difference between the twenty-seven and the thirty-five that's in the line item is the one-time purchase of those computers that would need to be upgraded.
Those computers need to be replaced regardless of the sufficiency contract, cause the XP operating system on them will no longer be supported in a, in a month.
That's correct. And the security issues that we would potentially have with that are?
Immense.
Immense.
How many computers? Did you say nine?
Yeah, it's eight or nine, I think.
Anything else? Thank you for being patient, Jerry.
Thank you.
Hanging around.
Thank you for inviting me to speak. I appreciate it.
You'll be back next Monday, right?
I will be here next Monday.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hoes, thank you.
Jerry.